The Groundskeeping Club, the Fitness and Yoga Club, Photography, Board Games, STEM and Lego Club, the Author Illustrator Club, Bookworm Club, School Spirit Club, Weather Club, Chart of the Chat and Munch Club where they get to chat and make things, and our Sign Language Club. And one of the things that our Lighthouse team has really been working hard is helping make decisions, and now that schools are starting to have visitors in, they've been working on being coming tour guides at our buildings because they're student-led, and they also help a lot with our Town Hall. Since we've had Town Hall virtually for the past two years, we have a green screen and they watch it on the bin queue, and we have the anchors, and we have a system in place to have anchors where the kiddos come in and serve before they get up in front of the green screen to present. And the Town Hall then is around 15 minutes where we do our mission, our pledge. We do lunch, we do the weather, and then there might be a funny Friday or a joke that somebody wants to tell. There might be announcements, Mrs. Plusekwayz gets on and has some announcements. So Town Hall is something that's been running very successfully, and then just this past Friday, we had our first live Town Hall. We're going to do that for the last nine weeks of the, for every Friday on the last nine weeks. And so kindergarteners in second grade have never got to experience a live Town Hall. And second grade was so excited to be able to come in and experience that this past Friday, and the students were just amazing. We had about eight leaders up running the whole Town Hall from the beginning to the finish, and then we also got to experience that togetherness in the gym, and the behavior was just absolutely amazing with that Town Hall. And then adults, we're looking at how our adults are finding their geniuses at Jefferson. We have a lot of staff that have been writing some grants for us for things happening at Jefferson. So we recently received two grants. Jenny Casada and Brittany DeMaye, our first grade teacher and our librarian, wrote a grant proposal to the Community Foundation, and that's on tonight's board agenda, that we're receiving $5,190 for a book vending machine to put in at Jefferson. Tokens will be used to redeem these books, and we have a lot of community interest when they were reading the grant. So the Findlay Public Library would like to partner with us and maybe have us be a school where county schools can come in and visit and kind of see that. Also, we received $12,421 for our State Early Leadership Grant. This is an ongoing grant that we renew and so we can have volunteers come in. So this last year, we didn't have as many volunteers as we had hoped to have, but we are getting the volunteers back into the building and allowing them to read with kids. So one of the things that we've worked on with our Junior Lighthouse team is we just asked them, and I have to give a hats off to Maddie Zellner, who is also part of the Junior Lighthouse team with me, and we've worked together with our young leaders here, and we asked them, what do you love about Jefferson? And I would love to hear 361 students at my school, what they love about Jefferson, but we have some eight little Junior Lighthouse students would like to tell you what they love about Jefferson.
It's just so they can hear us online.
Okay. It's okay. Okay, Molly.
Okay.
Ready? Ladies, if you would like to stand up, and then you'll breathe in the microphone, and then maybe go to begin. The sound like you can hear. My name is...
My name is Molly. And what I love about Jefferson, it's a big school with lots of rooms. My name is Remy, and I, what I like about Jefferson is I love leadership clubs.
My name is Bella from Mrs. DeMaye's class. I love leadership club.
Leadership Clubs is a favorite.
My name is Gwen, and what I love about Jefferson is there's a whole bunch of nice friends.
My name is Septim, and why I like Jefferson is because I go to learn with my friends and teachers.
My name is Autumn. What I love about Jefferson is that our people are nice.
My name is Sophia, and I'm from second grade, and the way I like Jefferson is because everybody is a great person.
My name is Jolson from Mrs. Ryan's class. What I love about Jefferson is that everybody is nice and smart.
Thank you. Can we give them a... We did an amazing job. We even had the little tears out there, but our leaders pulled it together, and they had calm bodies, ready to go. One thing that we do during Junior Lighthouse Team, you can't be in a club without having a secret handshake. Would you get with a partner and show them your secret handshake? And it's funny, when I'm in the lunchroom or I walk into their classrooms, I do get the secret handshake a lot for that. Next, I would like to share with you, I did ask Ms. Zellner to be here with us to talk about her role at Jefferson. She is one of our behavior coaches that we share with Chamberlain Hill.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Zellner, Maddie Zellner, sorry, I forgot, I'm talking to adults. And this is my 10th year at FCS, and I was ready for a change, a little bit nervous I was going to miss the classroom, but I get to be with over 600 K5 students every day, and that is a huge win-win to me. So I love this position. The three big things that I get to do, the biggest thing is constantly building positive relationships. The proactive approach to relationships and preventing the negative behaviors. We've learned a lot from Scott Irvin, also known as the Kid Whisperer, and that's one of the biggest roles that I'm implementing at both schools. Another big piece is the Leader in Me, which we're continuing, and I get to be a facilitator to the Junior Lighthouse at Jefferson and Chamberlain, which is awesome. And then finally, as a behavior coach, I get to work with like Tier One behaviors, which includes collaborating with our principals and the teachers, students, families, counselors, you name it, and I get to work with those people. I love my position this year, and I hope to see it continue.
The last thing that we would like to do is to offer an invitation to the board or anyone watching streaming, because we would love to share, part of our genius is sharing with adults and families in the community. We have two opportunities coming up, and we have invitations that our Junior Lighthouse Team will pass out to you here when I'm finished. We have a Habit Hop coming up, and that is going to be Thursday, April 7th. It's right after our parent-teacher conferences, that the parents have been invited to come in for conferences. And then we have an hour where they will go through a scavenger hunt with their parents and the children, and get to work on the seven habits, and with that Habit Hop at each spot. So that's on April 7th. And then a mini-Town Hall will be live at the Findlay High School Auditorium, and that will be April 21st, and that will be just a Town Hall ran with our music teacher. She will be, she's been working on great songs, some Seven Habits songs to share, and we've invited our Raise the Bar Committee to come and visit us that night. And so everybody and anybody's welcome to come celebrate all the great things happening at Jefferson. Thank you.
Mrs. Plusek, what time were those two events?
One was Thursday, April 21st. We have them passing that out from 6:00 to 7:00. And then the Jefferson Habit Hop is Thursday, April 7th, from 6:30 to 7:30. Okay? Thank you for that. And you might end up with four or five of these invitations, but share them with friends. And I'd like to thank the Jefferson families and the Junior Lighthouse Team for coming and spending a couple 15, 20 minutes with us to share your child's greatness. We appreciate that.
Any of the board have any questions for Mrs. Plusek or the kids?
I would just like to say thank you for bringing the kids in. I've missed that part of being on the board, seeing all the kids, and having the opportunity for them to present, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. I was excited when Krista Miller told us that we were able to do that, so I appreciated getting that approval, so thank you. Thank you. And at this time, if there's a family with the Junior Lighthouse Team that would like to sneak out quietly when we continue with the board meeting, you are welcome. Make sure your child got their Trojan Head Chocolate from Dietz's, and I'll see you all tomorrow morning in Town Hall. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Moms.
Thank you for coming.
I want to, I have three, and I'll try not to steal any thunder, or at least not a lot of thunder. But anyway, I wanted to follow up with the kids that just presented to us, because today at Rotary, they did a Leader in Me presentation for Rotary, and it was Findlay City Schools and surrounding schools that presented. And I got to tell you, you would have been so proud of our kids from Bigelow Hill that were there that presented. They were little adults presenting. They did a fabulous job, and really kind of set the tone and the bar. And then the other schools presented, and, but, but just, it was a fabulous presentation. Rotary was packed, and a lot of great questions and good interaction from Rotary and at all the schools. But you could really tell Findlay City Schools really stepped up as kind of being a leader in the Leader in Me, and, and really shown that way. So it was, it was, I was very proud, and it was a great day for Findlay City Schools and Leader in Me. Yep. And then also, I wanted to celebrate the physics class presenting to the city engineers. That's fantastic. I didn't know about that, but I think that's wonderful, and redesigning Riverside Pool, I guess that would be a great thing, so I look forward to see that kind of roll out here. Also wanted to just give a quick congratulations to FFE on their impressive performance at Nationals, so, thank you.
I just first want to thank Jefferson, because I love when the kids come in. It's such a nice addition to the board meeting. And then I also want to publicly congratulate Krista Kreitz-Miller, who's accepting the interim superintendent job for next year. Looking forward to working with you. I visited, I visited Wilson Vance and Lindsay Stevenson, and also Whittier and Kelly Baumann. There's a few things coming up for them, some things in May. I'm going to give you the dates closer to the time, because I know we won't all remember them, but I had some good visits at both of those schools, just lots of positive things going on with writing goals and, yeah, the phonics teachers, things are working well with those. It's going well, so I think it's been a positive year.
Okay, I've got just a couple as well. And first to follow up with Mrs. Russell's comments on the fifth grade class from Bigelow Hill did an amazing job, like you said, and that was Carter and Emerson, Teal, and they were the ones who spoke, and like you said, they're pretty pleased with them at Chamberlain or Bigelow Hill as well. Also, the physics students from Findlay High School, Tyler Smith's class, created 12 interactive stations to teach our fifth grade students about forensic science. It was a great success, and the students were fully engaged. Next was Coach Ernst, and some of the basketball players from the University of Findlay kicked off the fifth grade problem-based learning unit on force and motion. They shared force and motion and used the basketball to show that, and the students were pretty excited to see that. And I know Mr. Roth will probably touch on this a little bit as well, but a few of us attended the OSBA Northwest Region Spring Conference at Findlay High School, and it was a great way to showcase all the things that are happening at Findlay High School and really Findlay City Schools altogether in our great facility at the high school. So it was good to have, you know, different districts come in and be able to see all that we have at Findlay. And Troy did a great job representing us, so.
Troy or Tom?
Well, I was going to say Tom, but they may not get that yet. He did really well.
Thank you.
So that's all I have.
I have a couple here. Yeah, I really enjoyed the spring conference as well at the high school, which is so, so amazing to see all of our students, you know, be able to present the way they did and represent Findlay so very well. And, and yeah, thanks, Tom, for your contributions. Just so you know, he got introduced as Tom Roth, so, yeah, we kind of had that thing going. But anyways, I wanted to take a quick minute here and actually celebrate a couple of our principals. Of course, you know, our students are wonderful, and they do so many wonderful things, but I think sometimes, you know, it's, you forget about some of the extra things that our folks have to do. So first of all, I want to celebrate the whole DLT. That's something that Laura and I go to every meeting, and Stephanie's here tonight, and Katie just do a phenomenal job with that. But I especially want to put a shout out to Meg Simon, who kind of watched and just observed, you know, working with the Glenwood team and things like that. So just, that's a whole nother layer of what we do, and people don't usually see that, you know, because it's, you know, it's a meeting just for administrators and teachers and things like that, but just a shout out for all the work you do with that, because it's a lot of work, I know that. And the other one too, is I actually got to spend some quality time with Pam Hamlin and Justin Shank. A week ago was our Ohio Career Technical Administrators Conference that we go to every year. Well, this is the first time we've got to go to it live for a while, and it was, it was just really good to be back in person, and it was an amazing conference, learned a lot of new things that are coming down in career technical education, one of which is the good news, is that we're going to be getting more funding, which is, I know Pam's really excited about that too. But just a lot of responsibilities and a lot of things go on outside of, you know, the day that, that our administrators do, so just overall shout out for that too. And my last one, this is something that we actually got in the mail, and I just love this. This is from Rich Fowler, and it's in regard for the Hope House event that was held, and our hockey team volunteered for that. And again, this is representative of many, many of our students and teams that do volunteer in the community, which is, I think, such a valuable experience. But I really enjoy this letter from Rich. Says Nate Coaches and all who assisted, "Thank you for allowing these young men to assist their community. The Trojan Hockey Team provided the muscle and the laughter at the setup for the Findlay Hope House event, and they were awesome. Helpful, enthusiastic, personable, and energetic. They were exactly the help needed to get the job done and done well. They may also have, quote, 'caught the bug' to continue to help their community, as I think they had some fun at this event and saw what a huge impact a little effort can have in a big way. They may want to volunteer at even more events in the future. We'd love to have them. Thanks again for guiding and molding these great kids into findment, and thanks for allowing them to make a positive impact in their community." So that was from Rich Fowler on behalf of the Hope House, and the reason I just got a little choked up is I had a son who was a hockey player, and among the many wonderful photos and pictures and memories that I have of him playing hockey, and that, the thing that all hockey moms love is that, you know, that sound of your kid getting smashed into the boards really, really hard. But along with that was the importance that they put on community service. Cliff Brown is the coordinator for that, and he does it every single year. It's very, very important to him. We make certificates and things like that for the players, but again, it's representative of all of our students. So congratulations to the hockey team, and thank you.
I would like to wish our spring student athletes good luck this season if they can get started with the weather. I know I'm really hoping for some warmer weather sometime soon, or at least for it to stick around. And then I would like to touch on FFE. I was able to attend their send-off at, I believe, 6:00 in the morning at the high school, and I thought that was a pretty great event put on by the parents and supporters. And I did pay attention online and social media of their performance and did watch them, and they are amazing. And I believe they placed fourth in Nationals, right?
Yes.
So congratulations to them.
Great.
Ms. Roth?
Yep, I didn't put too many down, because everyone always takes them, so I have two. One already has been shared, but I want to reiterate what's already said, and shout out and congratulations to Ryan Emke and his staff for last Thursday's OSBA banquet. That took a lot of work and a lot of people at the high school to organize it, so appreciate all the, all the help in showcasing our students and our district, a lot of positive compliments. But I want to make sure we point out, we had assistance from FHS Leadership Kids, we had orchestra students perform, we had VIP perform, and we had millstream students that catered and served dinner, so it was very impressive. About 100, just under 100 board members and administrators from other school districts around Northwest Region. About 100, just under 100, board members and administrators from other school districts around Northwest Region. So thank you to Mr. Emke and his staff for showcasing Finley High School and the district. And then lastly, I'd like to celebrate last Friday. Glenwood celebrated Disability Day. I'd like to celebrate Tricia Clausen for organizing the event and also for Danielle Powell for speaking to students about her experience with raising a child with special needs. It was a great event for our kids here at Glenwood. Like I said, that was last Friday. So thank you to all those people. Excuse me.
You good?
Yes.
I'd like to go back to when FFE makes it to Nashville next year. My wife and I would like to go, so I'd appreciate the invite. Do you want to speak about the grants before we go for a motion for that?
Do you want to take a motion first?
I can.
Okay.
Mr. Roth recommends a motion to approve the grants listed.
Second.
And I'll go quickly, but there are a number of grants I definitely want to point out because they're significant dollar amounts. First is Casey Store Support Center has awarded Tanya Turbin a $25,000 grant to be utilized for the land lab at Chamberlain Hill. You may have seen that in the newspaper or listened to Tanya on the radio. So that is the first grant. Couple of these are, actually several of these are from the Finley Hancock County Community Foundation. The first one there is worth $250 to the Finley High School Athletic Department. This will support the Finley High School swimmers at the state swim meet. Was suggested by Jeff and Elsa Schrader and is being funded by the Gregory James Schrader Donor Advised Fund. The second, Finley Hancock County Community Foundation authorized a one-year grant totaling $5,190 to be awarded to Jefferson. I believe this is for the school vending machine that Mrs. Plusick mentioned. And that funding source is the Hancock Reed's Endowment Fund. Also from the Community Foundation, a one-year grant totaling $2,800 awarded to the preschool for the concert on the playground with Justin Roberts. The lead teacher in that is Carrie Redman. The funding source is the John C. and Jane Barbary Fund and William H. and Martha Lupe Fund for Innovative Initiatives. And then two more from the Finley Hancock County Community Foundation, a one-year grant totaling $12,421, as was mentioned by Mrs. Plusick, for the Jefferson Primary School program. This is the Stitt Grant from Bill and Evelyn Stitt Fund. And then also the Stitt Grant Fund for $13,900 to Northview. And then lastly, we have Joe Duval and Tanya Turbin have been awarded an OEA Foundation Grant in the amount of $5,000 to assist with steam materials for designing and building prototypes.
Any discussion? Ms. Harrington?
Mr. Aldridge?
Hi.
Mrs. Russell?
Hi.
Mr. Cooper?
Hi.
Ms. Iyer?
Hi.
Dr. Seaman Al Wilson?
Hi.
Moving to public participation, do we have any employee representatives?
Yes.
We have a lot of things.
Well, just to remember, you have five minutes each.
Mine will be less than five minutes. All right. We have some things we'd like to celebrate. We asked our members, you know, this week about, you know, some shout-outs that we were going to speak at the board. So on their behalf, congrats to FFE for an outstanding performance at the Showcase Nationals in Asheville also. They finished second in the prelims and ended up fourth place, finishing the finals. The FFE crew won most outstanding crew at the finals. Another one you guys touched on earlier, the Disability Awareness Day last Friday was a huge success here at Glenwood. Said Glenwood's sixth graders, they spent periods one through four, split into half the grades, learning what it might be like to have a variety of different disabilities, but also learning to be compassionate and advocates, not only for our students who happen to have disabilities, but for the entire population as well. Donell's math teacher Jill Leatherman has trained the whole eighth grade staff, or the whole eighth grade floor, in how to get one of her students who is wheelchair-bound out of her wheelchair and into a standing desk. Previously, the student only got to stand 20 minutes a day at lunch. They have only, and they only have one standing contraption at school during the school year, so no standing at home. She is now able to stand for the entire math block and said last week she thinks she's getting stronger as a result. Donell eighth grade language arts teachers invited any student who was feeling stuck during their practice test essays to writer's block party at lunch and brought them pizza and gave them some secret tips and tricks on how to get through writer's block and testing anxiety. The Hancock Historic Leadership Team at Donell also hosted several community leaders to discuss the histories of various businesses at Finley. Their latest guest was Dr. Fell, who spoke about the history at the University of Finley. She also provided the students with UF gear and spoke about leadership and educational opportunities that the university provides. Bigelow Hill would also like to invite anybody and everybody to the Big Shake Finals this Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00 at Chick-fil-A. The sales for that night will go towards college or career scholarships for the finalists. This will be the eighth championship. Thank you to Chick-fil-A of Finley for supporting the students and staff at Bigelow Hill. Over 75 third, fourth, and fifth graders at Bigelow Hill got to participate in the Music Man Musical. It is directed by Kate Kidd and Dan Basinger. Countless hours are dedicated to this show, so our students can benefit from the onstage experience. The Bigelow Hill Community Garden Project is in full swing, and the garden team has spent countless hours working with Dennis Doolittle and the Community Garden Club to get things moving. And also, I'd like to highlight, last Friday at Millstream, we had a reverse job fair, and we had over 55 employers visiting with our students. It was a very successful, I think it was our third year. It was the first time we've been able to do it in the last two years, so it was also very successful.
We wanted teachers, it really meant a lot to the teachers that they were given the option to work from home for the two-hour delay. They said that they enjoyed the flexibility, and it makes them feel valued and respected. Alicia Fox, Mary Beth Gaiman, and Stephanie Wiegand were all recognized by the Northwest Ohio Education Association for their service to the students and the staff at FCS. Whittier students are embracing the diversity of our building as our English learner population grows. Students are helping their non-English-speaking classmates with vocabulary, pictures, letters, and numbers. Students are also eager to learn new words and languages of their peers. The Whittier students have all been working to earn Trojan tokens for using the seven habits at school. If every student earns a Trojan token, Mrs. Baumann will kiss a pig. And they are on track to make that happen. Along with the $25,000 grant that Tanya Turbin got for the STEM students, Tanya Turbin and Joe Duval also received a $5,000 scholarship for the OEA Innovation Grant for $5,000 for Chamberlain Hill as well. Somebody said Chamberlain Hill has had numerous teachers, along with Mrs. Sager, synergizing to make all of our students who needed it receive the appropriate accommodations for state testing. This is not an easy task since there are so many students on 504 plans and IEPs within the building. It was great to see so many people working hard together to ensure all our students feel successful during testing. So testing at the elementary level at least starts this Wednesday. For reading, it's Wednesday, Thursday. Students with IEPs started today. I mean, it could have, depending on how many students you have. Also, Chamberlain Hill will host a showcase night on Thursday, March 31st. This event celebrates all the exciting learning happening at Chamberlain Hill with literacy, steam, and art activities. The committee who planned the event even made a sensory-friendly family time from 4:30 to 5:00 for students who could benefit from a separate event with less noise. The Junior Lighthouse leaders, also at Chamberlain, are in the process of planning a walk-a-thon fundraiser for May. They will be in charge of contacting local businesses for donations to help pay for t-shirts for all staff and students. And Chamberlain Hill is also working on the March Madness Tournament of Books. Voting starts this week and will wrap up on Friday with a large Zoom call with all the classes in the building and around the district who helped vote for books this year. There was also, just wanted to make mention of, and celebrate, the feeling of normalcy finally starting to kick back in a little bit. Fingers crossed. And buildings such as the Trojan Club Reverse Raffle being in person. The town halls, field trips, and guests are being allowed back into the building. The FHS Musical, Damn Yankees, opens April 9th and runs through the 11th. There are approximately 55 students, FHS students, and five middle school students involved. This talented cast and their directors, Andy Cantrell, Tim Montgomery, Kevin Manley, Ashley Carey, Laura Dyer, Dan Wilson, Dave Simmy Meyer, Carmen Brown, and John Gale Bardial, are hard at work putting the final touches of the production. And you can get tickets online or by contacting Andy Cantrell. And the high school had a, well, there was. Finley City Schools had a safe space training presented by Vi Allen from Spectrum of Finley at FHS last week. About 20 teachers and staff attended from various buildings in the district. Last week, as I think you might have mentioned about Tyler Smith, his physics class, he didn't just come to Bigelow, he went to all the intermediate, I believe. And their physics class went to all the intermediate schools and shared the science behind things like light sabers, rockets, catapults, roller coasters, and much more to all the fifth graders in the district. And the Teacher Resource Fair that was put on by the Hancock County Historical Society was very well received and much appreciated by the community, by the teachers in the community. And then finally, I just wanted to make note that this week, we finally finished with having the official Denise Spougeur Memorial Scholarship put together through the Hancock County Foundation. No, you know what I mean. And so we'll run it through there. It'll go to a student from Bigelow Hill each year. And we'll be doing a couple fundraisers over the next two years to get the seed money that we need for that in addition. But our first event is June 4th. It's going to be a car and a car and motorcycle. Like a car show, Denise and her husband were very much into classic cars. So that will be June 4th at K-10. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for sharing all that. Appreciate it. I don't see any students. How about parents? Do you have any?
No.
Moving on to correspondence from the board. Treasure?
Nope.
District?
No, sir.
You?
No, sir.
Moving on to consent items for certificated personnel. Need a motion to approve B through I.
So moved.
Second.
I have nothing specifically to report that's out of the ordinary. All things that we have basically done in the past. But if there's any questions on anything, B through I, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions or discussion? Ms. Harrington?
Dr. Seaman Al Wilson?
Hi.
Mrs. Russell?
Hi.
Mr. Aldridge?
Hi.
Mr. Cooper?
Hi.
Ms. Iyer?
Hi.
Moving on to consent items, B through K for classified personnel need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I do have a few things to point out in B through I, I believe. First one is letter C. There's two retirements there. Jeffrey Miles, Lead Maintenance, with 40 years of service to Finley City Schools. And also Teresa Elabrock from Food Service with 20 years of service. I'd just like to recognize both of them and wish them best of luck in their retirement. Moving on, letter F for '22-'23 school year. fabs is looking to increase their prices. I know it's been a few years since we have had any increase in fabs pricing. They're looking to increase their cost per session by only 50 cents per session. Letter I is a resolution we have done for several years. This is a resolution for third-grade assessments in paper format. This will allow for the third-grade ELA assessment to be administered paper, pencil. And like I said, that is something we've done to last several years. And I believe that is it. Mr. Cooper?
Any discussion? Ms. Harrington?
Mr. Aldridge?
Hi.
Dr. Seaman Al Wilson?
Hi.
Ms. Iyer?
Hi.
Mrs. Russell?
Hi.
Mr. Cooper?
Hi.
Treasures report.
Geez, hopefully I can talk a little bit better now that it's a fun subject and everything's, the kids got me all worked up there. They were so cute. So we had our finance meeting. We do have a change coming up on our next one. We were going to meet April 19th at 4:00, but we decided to move that to April 13th at 11:00. Just so, you know, we have been trying to post those. They are a small group of us right now. We're currently working on some possibilities of having a second finance committee because it's a lot of fun, and we'll discuss that more in May. So we did, I did want to share that I had, went to the, Sean and I both went to a meeting at the county auditor's office about CRAs and things like that. And it was discussed that I'm going to go to a meeting on April 5th with the mayor and Matt, I can't recall his last name, I apologize, in regards to our communications and CRAs. I'll let you know more about that as it gets, once that meeting has been held. Just to kind of show me the way that we typically handle things here in Finley, just every community has it a little bit different. I just want to make sure that I understand and that we're doing our due diligence on how we do it with our community. So just put that, I just wanted to let you guys know that I didn't share that with our finance committee because I just got the invite today, so. But moving on to the, currently, we tend to spotlight the general fund at the meetings until we do like a year-end meeting, which is usually in July or August, which we don't usually have. A lot of people are more excited about getting back to school and starting. So we may want to do some change-ups of that because I did want to share a fun fiscal fact that, does anybody know how many actual funds we have? I will be shocked if you do, but I will be happy, but I will be surprised because it's a very large amount, a large number that people don't normally think about. So we talk mostly about the general fund because that's the largest, you know, about 30 million in, 30 million out. By the end of the year, it's 60-some million in, 60-some million out. We have 399 funds. But we spotlight the general fund because the other funds, if we had enough time at each meeting, would be fun to go through a segment of them just so that we could talk about it briefly and maybe, you know, explain to, you know, everyone so that we're all on the same page. It's a lot of funds, and so the Board of Education, it's a challenge for them to, you know, review all that. And I know it's a lot of work. And so I just think sometimes it's not just this one paper that we give out. There's a lot of funds and a lot of processes that they go through behind the scenes. So just want to throw that fun fiscal fact out there. So right now, personnel, you know, revenue's coming in right on track, a little bit still iffy, still not sure on the state funding. I'll be attending a clinic in April, April 10th, 11th, and 12th. And I'm hoping to gain insight through the company that we're using currently, the Forecast Five Group. They'll be sharing with us some of the calculations and where they think they're going to be, where we're going to be falling in regards to, as you recall, some of the funding that we were receiving before. We were paying some out for children that were going out, some money going in. That all that moving in and out funding is now being placed where the child's being educated. And it's not solid yet. We're not quite sure. So I'm a little bit apprehensive on each month until we find out for sure where we're sitting. So that company, the Forecast Five Group, has put together a simulation for all the districts that it does business with, so I'm anxious to work with them. So Personnel Services, we came in at about 23 million for, that's wages, that's just wages, and about 9.8 million for benefits. So where does that put us? Well, as we discussed, there's some moving around of things because we had a wellness grant that needed some tweaking here and there with the way it was being funded. And the governor decided to take the specific account away and then put it in the general fund. So we're still get some of the funds, but maybe not. So do I believe that our forecast is pretty accurate? I do. I think we may come in a little bit lower on our forecast slightly if all things remain the same. So, you know, we do have some highs and lows in our forecast. As you know, in January, our funding is much higher because we pay out all our severances that month. So we like to make sure that we're all on the same page with that because that's not a norm. So you don't want to do your trends based on January, or you'll be, you know, a little bit off. Benefits, same thing. We're coming in right where we thought. Purchase Services is something we're watching real close as a finance committee because, again, that's the line that the state is kind of controlling right now. In the past, a year ago, it was like 9 million. But now you see we've dropped it to 4.9 million because if everybody's getting their funds... to 4.9 million because if everybody's getting their funds back, there won't be all that billing back and forth. So, you know, it might come in a little higher, might come in a little lower as we get closer. And we have our two finance meetings in May to review the forecast with our committee. We'll come with you to the best analysis that we have at the time. I have been meeting, I think I've met with almost, I think I still have four more to go with all the principals and directors in regards to their budgets for next year. We did go over a little bit about this year. It's very, the system's a little bit slow. It's a new system and redesign is, it's great because it's web-based, but we are implementing strategic solutions, which is SCVIEW, which is a game changer. And I think it will be a lot more helpful to our buildings, the teachers, the principals. It'll give them a lot more hand, immediate information, not a lot of, cut down a lot on paper. And there's, I'm excited to get it started, having a lot of help with, from Kelly Young and Sean, Swisher, both are really helping out a lot getting that set up. So all in all, I think that the, the general fund is right where it is. All the other funds, we aren't going to talk about all them tonight. We could if you wanted to, but we're not going to. But I believe we're right on track. You know, we're paying our bills on time. We're, you know, we've worked out a few solutions that were causing us some grief, but for the most part, I think all that is going great, great. One thing I do want to talk about is the Ohio Checkbook Online. We've reached out to them several times. It's funny because before COVID, they would be like, ooh, right on top of that. So there, we did get a call back that says, yes, they're going to start working with our, they have to go through our ITC Center, which you folks know is in Lima. That's our ITC. So we're doing some cleanups that they recommend so that each month when we go to submit it, there's no problems. So we are, we are doing that. We want to get that up and running. And at our next school finance class, which is projected for, I do like summer, winter, spring, and fall. Yes, fall is my favorite season, but spring, we will be meeting and it'll be after the forecast, obviously, because we want to be able to share with you what, what direction the board's going with the finances. But we also want to be able to talk a little bit on how to use the Ohio Checkbook Online. It's very com, it's a little confusing. So all those are exciting things that are happening in the treasurer's office and every day is a, a new adventure. That's all I had to say about that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to gifts and donations. Motion to accept the gift donation?
So moved. Second.
There are, number one, yeah, I never thought I'd have to say thank you for the donation of cow eyes. But one donation was for, for cow eyes valued at $325 from Rodabaugh Meats, Lynx Country Meats, Pascal Custom Process from North Baltimore Custom Cuts, and D&amp;H Meats to Millstream Career Center Health Professions Program. We also had a $500 gift from Socket, of sockets, hammers, air hoses, and jab saws from Lowe's of Finley to Millstream Career Center Construction Automotive Programs. $471 gift from Richard and Evelyn Holman to Millstream Career Center Fund for the Finley Hancock Community Foundation for the construction program. A gift of $1,240 from LaRiche Chevrolet for Finley City Schools Teacher Appreciation Week. A $2,000 Mercury Mountaineer valued at $500 from Kemp Gilts for the Millstream Career Center Automotive Technology Program. And $1,000 from Marathon Petroleum for Finley City Schools Teacher Appreciation Week. So very thankful for all those businesses and community members that have donated to Finley City Schools. And the cows for donating their cow eyes.
I don't think they had a choice. But anyway.
Any comments or questions about the gift and donations?
I'd just like to say, it's incredible to see the support from our community, especially when you look at the large dollar donations from, you know, the companies and corporations here. And specifically, since I've worked for Marathon, you know, seeing that the $1,000 from them for our teachers is truly appreciated. So thanks to them and all of them.
Yeah, and I did, I, we've been chuckling about the cow eyes, but I was, I was in a class in high school in which we actually got to dissect, you know, real creatures. And there's nothing like it from an educational point of view. So we're laughing, but we really do appreciate, you know, any donation, that the financial, financial donations are wonderful and the cow eyes, cow eyes are also very valuable to that class to be able to do those dissections. So thank you very much.
Anybody else? Ms. Harrington?
Ms. Iyer?
Aye for Iyer.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen Al Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Giving a whole new name to I.
It's real slow.
Moving on to discussion items, new curriculum and new textbook, Web Design 1 and 2 and Spanish 3.
Yes, and we have Katie Abbott here to provide an explanation of this.
Thank you. Yes, we are here to talk about two new courses of study as well as six through eight ELA adoption. This is the first read this evening and the second read coming at the next meeting. So in 1920, during that school year, the Spanish department at Finley High School began the Communicative Language Approach, which is a new way of teaching world language. And so they started that with a resource SOMOS and we are growing that. So the CP Spanish 3 that you see is the next in that phase in, in the transition for our students. Web Design 1 and 2 is the prior course. It was web developed, Web Development 1 and 2. And that's back when creating web pages was a little bit more of an extensive process than it currently is now. So we've taken the opportunity to revamp and to edit this course to Web Design 1 and 2. They are semester-long courses and we will be utilizing the new software and other online applications for designing those web pages. And then finally, I am super excited to bring to you the grade 6 through 8 ELA resource adoption. So this past winter, a group of 15 individuals across administrators, teachers, the entire range of learners got together for a series of meetings to evaluate new resources for our 6 through 8 English Language Arts Program at both Glenwood and Donnell Middle School. We developed an instructional vision that was our guiding light throughout the entire process, that we took all of our resources and evaluated and kept going back to that as our guidepost as we continue to evaluate. We also assessed based on a local rubric, utilizing board policy and those pieces that are important to us as Finley City Schools. And then finally, the nonprofit ed reports has done a huge analysis on multiple different resources. And so utilizing all of those three pieces and much deliberation among 15 people we have recommended to the Curriculum Council, they have unanimously voted for the Savis My Perspective Resource. It has a consumable for our students, hardback for our teachers, as well as online for all of our students as well. So we are bringing all of those three to you this evening for our first read and then we will be, we will be voting at the next meeting. Any questions I can answer?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Katie and that group that worked extremely hard to come to a consensus and spent a lot of hours reviewing materials. They did a great job. So appreciate it, Katie.
Thank you. Not 1919. We were back in 1919.
That started a few years ago, if we can get it to here.
You may have to hit the gavel.
No, no.
And, and letter B is new policy 10.16 is a district social media policy. You know, we have over 400, I believe, Mr. White told me, social media accounts that are associated with Finley City Schools without a really solid policy. So we've, with the cooperation, Mr. White and Derek Hagerty, we are presenting this to you for a first read. This will allow us to operate our social media pages much more efficiently. So tonight is a first read and I appreciate Mr. White taking a look at this policy and bringing that forward.
Moving on to action items, treasurer recommends approval of the sublease agreement between FCS and Family Resource Center. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
As you know, we vacated the property, Great Scott property where we had our offices for three, four years, the administrative offices. We worked with Mike Niedler, Fresh Encounters, and with FRC to, to lease that space. We're very appreciative of Mr. Niedler for allowing us to sublease the majority of that space to FRC. So we're asking for approval of the sublease for FRC to take over April 1st.
Any discussion? Ms. Harrington?
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen Al Wilson?
Aye.
Out-of-state travel, superintendent recommends approval of the out-of-state travel. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
These are two trips for Millstream students that qualified for national competition. The first is our DECA students, our marketing students at Millstream to go along with their advisors to Atlanta, Georgia from April 23rd to April 26th to compete at the International DECA Competition. And the second one is teaching profession students to travel to Washington DC from June 22nd to June 28th to compete in the Ed Rising National Competition. Our Millstream students did very well in state competition this year.
Any discussion? Ms. Harrington?
Dr. Stephen Al Wilson?
Excuse me?
Yes? You vote yes?
Yes. I've, did she say, oh, Stephen Al or Wilson, sorry. I was still stuck on 1920.
Miss, miss cow eye, I mean, miss I.
I'm going to go again, I for I.
Okay. Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
That was a complicated one.
Moving on to reports to the board, Mr. Adams?
First and foremost, thanks for, for having me and, you know, giving me the opportunity to speak to you all from an educator standpoint. That's what I am, person foremost and what I take the most pride in. Secondly, thank you to the board. I never had a chance to thank you in person to your faces for your support during the football season this year. Seeing you guys at games was awesome and also the spirit that you guys have pumped into it and is greatly appreciated from a personal standpoint, but also from the community standpoint as well, too. And it was kind of a dream come true at times, seeing the stands full this year and seeing people absolutely in unison with one shirt or whatever theme that may be and realizing the power that, you know, that has on a team. You know, I say everybody's a part of it, everybody's an important stakeholder, and you guys are exactly that. So thank you. I know the pride that I have now as a Finley Trojan, every time I see that, I get excited and, you know, I loved every second of it and couldn't believe if you told me in 2014 I'd be in Finley, Ohio, being the outside of Philadelphia native, but I quickly went home for a year and made my way right back. So that goes right, segues right into this kind of, you know, this presentation. I won't be long. I just want to kind of hit on a couple of points. I had the opportunity to present this at the Sheriff's Event a couple of weeks back and connect with, once again, some amazing agencies out here in Hancock County that I'm sure a lot of us don't even know. So it was a chance for me to speak about where we are, the whole child opportunity, and what we're about, what we're trying to do. So I'll freeze through it and, you know, hit some major points there. Um, I just, you know, I always say, you know, people will say, oh, we feel like we know you, but we don't know you. You know what I mean? You're involved in a lot of things, but they're right. When I go home, I go home and I hibernate. But just a little bit about me, just my, my background, I had the opportunity to study communication studies and my track was a focus on interpersonal relationship management, basically the study of people. And I loved every second of it and I knew without much direction, I tried to avoid education, but with two parents who were educators, grandparents who ran their Christian Academy, I knew I probably didn't have a choice. So easily knew I didn't want to grade papers like my mother and father. So I figured school counseling was the best way to still be myself and impact as many students as possible. Perfect, thank you. Just some findings, you know, earlier in the year, I had the wonderful opportunity to go up to the Toledo Public Schools and I met with four separate different, you want to call it, people, but also programs as well, too. And here were some things that I came out with very, very, very important. I got a chance to sit down with Trudy Neely, who is the principal at Toledo Rogers, who made me feel like I was sitting down with my Aunt Sina from Alabama. She had me at, sit down, baby. And I said, yes, ma'am. You know, but one thing that was very important that she talked about was making sure that you're connected with and having people who have deep roots in their community. That was very important from a school standpoint. She talked a lot about how she was so happy and how she grew up in Toledo, was a product of Toledo, and how important it was to have teachers and educators who cared about her, but also saw something in her that she didn't see, which easily gave her the opportunity to support and give back to her own community and district as well, too. So I thought that was important and there was more to that conversation, but that really stuck out, we connect with as many people as you possibly can who have deep roots in our own community. The next section was kind of a group of people who were able to talk about self-care for teachers, understanding where we are, the landscape of where teachers are, you know, kind of navigating through a pandemic. Typically before, right, you would say that, you know, here and there, a couple of adults had some things going on behind the scenes and we dealt with that, right? We supported, we wrapped our arms around them. Well, kind of navigating through a pandemic, everybody was going through something. Everybody was kind of on edge. So how are we supporting our teachers? How are we making sure they are in the right mind frame to give back to our kids and be the best versions of themselves? So I thought that was very important. Money, 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 okay, was a very important part. It talked about not being afraid to ask, not being afraid to have the connections and the ability to ask. And, you know, any grant possible, they say, we jump on it. And one of the things that really stuck out was because of the strong and deep roots in the community, there was one person or a donor who was a Toledo product who donated about a million dollars and was told to please help families who were struggling, losing homes through the pandemic. And it was, I heard a little story that gets me all worked up, but, you know, it just kind of spoke to, once again, deep roots in the community, staying connected, and giving back to those who are less fortunate. And the last one was kind of weird, so, thank you. The last one, I use my I, 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 I. The last one was kind of the resiliency in kids. Obviously, once again, resiliency in adults as well, too, but also our kids are struggling. The resiliency has dropped some and how are we helping them to be able to bounce back? What are the tools that we're able to give them? And ultimately, that leads to what we're doing with somewhat the whole child, the whole child instruction. I kind of have some things that just, you know, this year, it's slow to fast. I am one person that wants to just jump right in and I want to see results now, but I understand this is a process and it's important to respect the process. And one of the biggest things I got from sitting down with Principal Neely was connection. And it's just a connection. It's going to take time. Not everything happens that fast. So it's kind of a slow to fast approach. So my big thing this year as the whole child counselor at the high school has been to connect to many agencies and committees in Hancock County, but also adding into that to connect with our students, connect with our teachers, connect with our custodians, all of our support staff in our district and in our schools. And I've made it a complete effort to make sure I am as available as possible. And I just ask a lot of questions, just trying to get a feel of where we all are and where we can best serve and help. Because once again, the whole child goes back to, and we'll get into it some more here, at its core, you know, what are we doing to wrap our arms around kids? I didn't necessarily need the whole child. Had two parents who supported me heavily, but I got into education because as a servant leader and growing up within the church, all we did was serve people who did not have what I had. And so it's all I've known. So I figured, how can we give back and what can we do to give to kids and students and people who do not have, you know, who are less fortunate? Educators are exhausted. They're tired, okay? I hear a lot of they're tired. And it's not just a thing that, you know, is happening by any specific person, just by navigating a couple of tough years. People are tired, they're exhausted. How do we lift them up? How are we supporting our teachers is a big thing as well. And right now, we're just, just listening and jumping into classrooms and getting to meet. The high school's big. I went from elementary to middle school to high school and trying to navigate around the whole deal and meet as many and talk as many teachers as possible has been unique and it has been fun as well, too. How can we find money that's tied to the, you know, to whole child framework? We're discovering some things and have some, you know, some possible opportunities that I'm excited about. I'm on a couple of committees, you know, the delegation, the belonging committee, as well as kind of interacting with some other ones as well to help out with how can we connect some of these grants to the whole child framework. And then obviously, simply put, Maslow's hierarchy of needs, okay? And once again, this ties right back into kind of what I'm going to go on to. And once again, this ties right back into kind of what I'm gonna go on to next. The whole child framework, okay? So this is kind of passed down from ODE. That's a very, very important to know and to understand. This is not a thing out of the blue, this is something that we are trying to do that has been sent down to us from ODE, so it's very imperative that we apply. So, kind of breaking it down into a smaller scale, you can move to the next one. Once again, it talked about supporting the whole child, so starting with the inner core, right? At its core, we see outside things, material things, but let's start inside. When a kid feels healthy, let's say anybody in general, right? When anybody feels healthy, they feel safe, challenged, okay, and experience some wins, when they feel supported and ultimately engaged, we're going to get the most out of them. Employees, kids, it all falls in the same line, right? So this was very important when you start with the inner circle, you can go to the next one. Kind of the next part was learning and health, so just continuous improvement, how are we helping continue to improve? How are we giving equity? Understanding that equity at its core means how are we meeting the needs of a person where they are, okay? Once again, certain things I needed as a student, as a person, as an individual, was very different than maybe the people that were sitting right next to me. Different house, different trauma, okay? These things that pop up, so how are we, how are we giving and making sure that they have what they need to be the best version of theirself daily? You're good, you're good, you're good. Some more things, obviously, some key components, just talking about school safety, as I talked about before, the physical environment, school climate and culture, as you kind of go around the wheel there, once again, adding to expanding out into that circle. Move to the next one. And then ultimately, what's been a big thing for me this year, getting involved, is families, connecting with families. I've been able to bounce across a couple of schools, and for me, kind of having a whole landscape of being from elementary through to high school, have gotten to connect with families at other schools that I've worked with before. Hey, something's going on, it's extremely difficult, or they, hey, they're asking for Mr. Adams, they worked with you before, so it's been awesome to be able to bounce over and help out where needed, once again, to support that whole child understanding, not taking away from anybody else, but just understanding the connections that we've had are so valuable to help move these kids forward now, and especially kind of, once again, navigating through a couple of years of very hard times. And in conclusion, once again, just reminding that the whole child at its core goes back to how we are supporting our students, how we are getting the most, and how we're challenging them and allowing them to experience success, and I think we have a great model in here with the leader and me, as we continue to promote that and push it forward. The kids at the high school laugh at me when I say, "Hey, you're not being proactive, you're not putting first things first." Oh, come on, right? You know, I'm gonna bury it in your head, right, until you know it, so that's one of the many things that we're doing there. And then what are the next steps? I talked about it before, connect, 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 slow to fast. We'll connect, we'll engage, and then also we'll put into action, some action steps to really help move a lot of our students and also our faculty forward and support. At the end of the day, if I'm not my best, I can't be my best to the kids, and I understand that coming in daily into the workplace, so how can we support teachers and make them feel like they're at their best to be able to give to our kids as well, too? Other than that, it's been a blast, I've really enjoyed it, I love challenges, I love the highs, I love the lows, I appreciate them for what they're worth, and I'm super excited about continuing this good work, and very thankful for the opportunity to have this title, I don't take it lightly at all, so thank you to all of you, and thank you to Krista and Troy for the opportunity to get in this role, because it's an important one and one that I'm excited to see grow and see carry on for years to come, so with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, it's been great having Stefan, because he's been able to come over and work with some of our difficult kids that knew he knew at Jacobs, which is great, but when Stefan, when you came over for the Big Shake?
Yes.
One of our girls, who at the beginning of the year was on my list of really struggling behavior-wise, and she's doing awesome, but she said, "Is that Mr. Adams?" And I said, "Yeah," and she said, "He saved my life."
Make a big man soft.
When I was at Jacobs, he saved my life.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we ask, we ask some questions?
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, they're, I mean, not just for you, but Troy and Krista, please feel free to jump in, so, you know, we've, I spent the weekend actually looking at a lot of the information online for, from this program, and, you know, over the years, I mean, up to four years ago, when I first started on the board, you know, we've had, we had, we've had programs already in-flight that are many of the components that are in, in the whole child framework. Is this framework, I mean, so this framework actually is coming after a lot of the things we already started, okay, that actually comply with all those, so we, we check a lot of the boxes, just Findlay City Schools to begin with. Is this framework now that we're discussing, is this a requirement from ODE?
It's a requirement, a framework for your best practices.
Okay.
Our, our, our goal for our students is that we have, you know, an optimal environment, and this is a part of something that fosters an optimal environment for our students.
So it's a framework that we can choose to implement? How we, how we see fit?
How we implement it, correct.
How we see fit? Is that accurate?
Correct.
And I'll be completely transparent, it's not, it's nothing to be, it's nothing groundbreaking, it's just, like I said, best, best practices and things that we have in place, and tied to a lot of things that we at Findlay City Schools, which is the reason I came back here, have already been doing and putting in place, just in a more organized fashion of how we're going about it.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, that makes sense. So one of the things I mentioned was that there's a needs assessment that kind of comes at the beginning of this. Do we do a needs assessment?
That is a goal that we had talked about, a threat assessment, I think, that's coming probably 2023, so that we can tie data to the framework, is what are the, what are the needs data-driven, and what is our response to that need? And that's gonna tie in with some legislation that's coming in, where we talk about when we have to have a threat assessment team for the schools, which is some of the safety and security actually in our strategic plan number, action plan number one, as well as the culture and climate goal number two.
Okay, so, so we haven't done a needs assessment yet, but it's something maybe in the horizon, and?
Correct. Yes, we're actually working in with a company right now, we're gonna pilot potentially the last nine weeks, one particular grade level, so that we can go into a very educated way next year and utilize the data effectively, make certain this program is what it is.
Okay, yeah, make sure that we're tied, looped into that, please.
We're not, we're not quite to that place yet, but absolutely.
Okay, because I hadn't heard anything, and I was wondering about that?
Yep.
One thing that, that kind of jumped out, and actually, actually one of the concerns, if you go back to your, the graphic there, the concerns of parents that are coming to me in particular, actually, it was the, right there, thank you, is that the family's on the outside, and that's really, that's a good symbol of, of the concern that I'm hearing, instead of having the family on the inside next to the child with all of the, the school around them, it's the families on the outside of the circle?
Mm-hmm.
Because families want to be more integrated than on the outside of the circle.
Yeah, and actually, and if you, and even what I said, too, like, I went straight more to the community partnerships, if we made this, family would be 100% more, obviously, obviously in there, and I think we do that kind of, kind of daily. This is nothing that means by visual, we leave anybody out at all, it more means just kind of, as our, as our circle of control of our six hours of the day, what are we doing to ensure that we're able to make sure that we, you know, we challenge our students as well, we make sure they're safe, we make sure they're obviously engaged, supported from us, and then obviously, as time, we expand out, pulling the parents in where, where needed.
Yeah, so integration of parents and family into that model, I think, would be a good, something to keep in mind, because that, that's, that's one of the concerns, make sure we're aware of that.
Yeah, I think it'd be very safe to say that one of our goals every day, and how we navigate, is to make certain that families involve, and I guess my interpretation is families wrapping around, I mean, circling everything, because that's, that's the core as well, as working with families, top priority, so just kind of putting that into view a little bit.
Yeah, I think, like you said, this is what we can control.
Yeah, yep. Try to kind of tackle what we can control, and then obviously bring in where is needed. You know, one of the things that we, even on this whole initiative, and we talked about is some things kind of looking forward is, how can we pull a lot of our families and have them as a little more, not a little more, but have them connected to our, not just their kids, but also kids who need an example, who need a leader. One thing that I've, I've felt is kind of a need is more mentors, and not just, I'll be honest with you, not just a, let's go take a walk or go fishing, let's really sit down and have somebody that can kind of put something together and really be just, you know, a mentor, a role model, that is so needed right now for so many reasons, so many different dynamics, so really, not even pulling families in just for their kids, but also pulling families in to help and be examples and be, you know, be leaders and role models for other kids as well, too.
And then measurement, too, is, how, how do we measure the success? Because you're going, it, one of the stated kind of goals of this is a shift from academics as being the only measure of success, to a child's well-being, to the greater outcome and goal, the total well-being is the greater outcome and goal. So how do you measure that? Be interested as we kind of maybe go down this path together, we need to have some measurable goals.
I think, and with the data that we get back from that, that assessment, will kind of give us a nice target to be able to, to go for, because like I said, there's, you know, as you kind of, you're in it, you're, you feel there's so many things to attack, but really, in our reality, it's gotta be slow to fast, and the data that we can get, we can be a little more specific and more intentional as well, too.
Okay.
And I would echo Mrs. Russell on, on the data from a standpoint of measuring your effectiveness, because I think that's something that we can utilize to be able to, to share how effective this program is, because, you know, we know, you know, how important those relationships are, but I think being able to socialize that with the community is, is showing the real tangible data to be able to show how, where we were and where we've come, and I think there's ways to do that, I think one of them is just the threat assessment, you know, since it is a requirement from ODE, you know, as, down the road, that will be a requirement, but I think even just, as you said, mentors, being able to connect, you know, students with mentors, you know, just seeing how, how that has driven performance as well within, not only the high school, but all the other schools.
And even, just to be a little small snippet, one of the things was, you know, once again, measuring data was looking at maybe some of our, our data within our, you know, our high school, and being able to kind of figure out how we can kind of match up some mentors from our high school to our elementary schools. So right then and there, you're able to say, hey, is there data on, we can drive it however we want, but how can we connect our students that we have to our students that are at the elementary school, and see if maybe some things tend to kind of fall off a little bit, because at the end of the day, you know, some of the issues that we may have comes from, once again, Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Some of our students don't feel loved, and when you sit in the office sometimes, and you tell a student, hey, you have all As and Bs in your attitudes, this, and it's not magic, but I think you're worth it, and I think you're valuable, and you can be a great contributing member to the society, and they cry and walk out your office, boom, right then and there, that student's not ever been told that before, so how can we connect and give that student some very important relationships and basic needs, but we can connect them with kids in our own district, and that creates a mentoring program right there.
And especially when you look at Mr. Rimki's, you know, leadership program, you know, there's a touch point right there that you can provide training, and then you can integrate that, and then it's right there at, at the grassroots level.
Absolutely.
So how does this integrate with the Ohio Improvement Plan that we're on now?
Well, I would certainly say that when you have a student that comes engaged and ready to learn, their academics are gonna follow. And then the research shows that you have a student that's engaged, has a sense of belonging and a building, that their, their academics follow that, that's definitely research-based, that when they feel they belong, that you're gonna have higher academic achievement.
So, because really, the words here actually kind of concern me, the shift from academics. We don't want a shift from academics. I don't like that at all, just, just, I, I want it to be, we want to continue to focus on academics, but also be concerned about the well-being of the whole student, would be the sentence that I would construct?
Right.
That would make me happy.
And I think that was the intent of the strategic plan, was academic achievement number one?
Yes.
But these things would help us with academic achievement?
That was a quote that I, right, that was a quote that I got from the video that I watched last night where they launched this, you know? So, as long as, I mean, this seems like, so it's not a requirement, it's a framework that we can adopt, and it sounds like we have some flexibility in how we adopt it, and we definitely want to focus on academics, that's our number one, so as long as we do it with that frame in mind, then I think you're gonna get a lot of support for that, because parents want their children, you know, to, to have high academic, you know, have us have high academic standards for the children, okay? And, but then implementing the rest of this, for all the reasons you just said, you know, to great, you know, and as we've all talked about, basically to create or to help students realize their full potential? In regards to a well-rounded citizen.
A large portion of our population, academics can't be even addressed because these things aren't.
Okay.
So I, I don't even think that you're gonna get any, you can say all you want, well, we don't want to push academics to the side, if they're coming to school starving, without hot water, not, their basic needs are not met, that's, academics are to the side, so let's get them what they need to be successful, and then you'll see the academics fall into place, but there's no way, for some of our students, that academics are anywhere on their radar, because they're missing so many other things.
Just to, I'm sorry.
No, 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 obviously, that's, that's a big part of it, you know, it's, it's, once, once we can get them to where they feel and they have a sense of true meaning and true connection to what I always say is the blue and gold, then I think we'll be able to get the most out of them, and sometimes it's just identifying that is the first step, and once again, keep in mind that it's not every student, okay? We have a great, and then a high population of high-achieving students who have some wonderful things behind the scenes, but then there are some, still some ones that we, that have some tough experiences that I think that surprise, even myself, at times, and would surprise a lot of people, that we just need to wrap our arms around and make sure, once again, they have what they need, and just even being a coach, I have kids who don't know where their next meal's gonna come from, and I have the luxury of giving them some peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, and life's good, and then I'm able to get the most out of them from a nutrition standpoint, because I'm not thinking about being hungry, so, you know, just those little things that, once again, I, I was fortunate to have two parents and everything I needed, but I think the beautiful part about being in, in my position, in the position that I think I grew up in, it was able to see that other people do not have that, so how can we help them get that?
That's why it's a targeted approach.
Yeah.
So you've got to be very strategic and targeted, and trying to get those, and
Absolutely.
Those, those students are in need, and then being able to drive and show the improvement. I think that's the key point, to be able to, so we're not staying flat, because then it's hard to, to be able to say, okay, this program's bringing us above, but when we're able to show the data that says we're driving this to, not only, you know, just the student's well-being, but the academics along with it, this is the...
100%.
And I think that's, this is doing the groundwork, and now the next step, be able to really target that in. Gotcha.
Academics are always gonna be our focus. We want academic excellence for all students, and for some students, they don't need the supports that, you know, a, a framework needs to come in and fill any gaps, but for students who do need it, we want to make certain that we're serving, serving all our students and make certain that we're providing for them what they need at every level, so that they do achieve academic excellence. Academic excellence is the driving force.
And that's where it's gotta be targeted, because otherwise, we can water it down with trying to implement, you know, something that a student may not need, you know, we've got to be able to...
Well, I think that might be the misconception, right? We're not saying this has to be for every single student, if in the city schools, what we're saying is this is something to make sure that we, we do take care of the kids who do need this, and that the others are accepting of that as well, too, and wrapping their arms around them as well. I think that's kind of the, the major, the major part behind it.
And it's a community thing, it's more than just one thing.
So when it says family, that's why I went back, when it says family, it doesn't just say, you know, Stefan Adams' family, it says the other family that's coming in and helping out as well, too, and wrapping their arms around some of our students as well.
It's all.
Getting them all, yep, it's all us. Correct, correct.
I was just gonna say, quick comment, when I kind of first heard Paula DeRomera, who was our former state superintendent, talk about the whole model, he's explained that like the families are the circle that are around all those other entities, and that that circle's all joined together, and that families work together, because like you said, you know, we have families that, you know, have two solid parents that are there there for the children all the time. We have single parents. We have, um, uh, kids that don't have parents at all. We have grandparents raising kids. But when you see that circle connected, it's like all of us are helping each other as families. And I think what's important too is that circle is inside the community. And if our families feel like they're pulling toward the center there like that, and then the community's on the outside, then also our community is embracing our families, you know, as opposed to in some communities, you feel like, some families will say like, "I don't even feel involved." You know, like, "I don't wanna live here," and things like that. But I, I think, and like you said, at the football games, I mean, this one example of community pulling together. So that community things on the outside and then they're, they're getting their arms around the family. And again, that family's a circle. Um, that's kinda, and again, I didn't make that up myself, um, but Paolo Di Romero explained it that way. So that's how like when I focus in, I focus in like that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and thankful to a lot of our wonderful families in our community. And once again, what I can speak to of knowing some individual kids who it wasn't for those families pulling those kids in and them seeing what sometimes a, a home looks like.
Yeah.
Uh, and how it's run. There, there are people saving lives and once again, we just need everybody. Uh, we'd love everybody to be part of it more than anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Uh, any reports from the board? Superintendent comments?
Only thing I have is a reminder, Finley High School will start their testing here, state testing in the next couple of weeks here. Uh, we're gonna operate on a two-hour delay schedule, uh, to provide the best environment for the testing. Uh, on April 5th, 6th, 20th, 21st, 27th, and 28th, uh, the high school will be operating on a two-hour delay schedule for testing. And that information has been communicated, uh, to high school parents, correct, Mr. Emke? Thank you.
Transportation will operate on a minimal schedule.
Correct. Thank you. That's all I have.
Board comments?
I just real quick, actually have a question for Pam. Um, when you were talking about five-year forecast, um, that we were working, you're working with Forecast Five, uh, and they make those projections for the funding. Do they include Maelstrom within that projection? You know, because we have 14 counties that feed into us, but we don't have them the whole day. Does Forecast Five, cause we're a compact too, is the other thing.
Right.
Did you know if they are able to take that into account?
I will double check with them, but they did take it into account. It appears on the last one. You know, in November with me being so new, that they worked with me a little bit on that. But again, they're still so unsure down in Columbus, how the impact of it is going to be for the rest of this year. I know, we'll know for next year, but what they're doing with it right now, um, they had said they weren't gonna do anything. It was all gonna stay the same, but it, it, it appears a little tweaked. So, yeah. So they're, they're gonna meet with, I, that's a great question. And I'll be sure to make sure that they're aware that we have a compact in our, I, I just wanna see what they say about it. But the, I know the one in November, I asked about that right away, cause I said, "You do realize we're a compact. We're not a traditional," like what they're used to seeing when it comes to a vocational setting. So, um, it'll be interesting to see the model. And I'll, I'm anxious to share it with you, um, a little more, like do a little more hands-on with how we do things for the forecast so everybody's on the same page.
Yeah. At the conference I mentioned that we were at last week too, I know we had some speakers on that. And, um, you know, basically, uh, most of the, most of the, uh, participants are usually from career centers.
Right.
Uh, and some comprehensives and things like that. So, uh, even, uh, like a career center is, they have their kids all day long and stuff. And then I know the question was asked about, "What do you do about compacts?" And the answer was, uh, uh, well, we'll get back to you on that.
Yep.
So...
Yeah, they told me to, it'll remain the same until, till different, but I wanna, well, I'd like to see how it's gonna flow into it.
Yeah.
So I'm anxious to see. Good question.
Any other board comments? Can I get a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing employment and compensation of personnel and sale or purchase of property?
Still moved.
Ms. Harrington?
Dr. Stephen L. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Okay, it is 7:29. See, they even got a spot for that now, guys. I'm excited.